Okay. All set, just stop.
Go ahead, Tim.
You ready? We're good? All right, we'll start over. Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of December 15, 2020. I take a motion to open the meeting. So, by Teresa.
Second.
Second by, I think that was Trista. All in favor? Roll call, we'll do a roll call since we're doing remote. Higgins?
Here.
Pennington? I know what you meant.
Hi.
Pennington? Halligan?
Hi.
Pauls?
Aye.
Well, I'm an aye. The meeting is open. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I have two announcements. First, I want to thank EB Cam as always for streaming our events, especially with the short notice for the change tonight. So, thank you EB Cam as always. And then, the second announcement was, I just wanted to make an announcement to the community that, you know, I'm a firm believer that schools have been able to open safely this fall and that we, as the school committee, being leaders in the community with the schools, should be meeting in person. If it's safe for the kids to be in school, it's safe for the school committee to meet in person. Tonight's meeting, and also the first meeting in January, will be held remotely, not because of concerns over COVID, but because of the personal availability of multiple school committee members. So, we do have every intention of returning back to meeting in person for our second meeting in January, but it was a necessity for this meeting and the next one. So, I want the community to know, we firmly believe that the schools are safe to be open and will represent the schools as such. So, we're starting off tonight with a report from standing committees. So, we have the evaluation subcommittee. So, I guess I can go first. Superintendent met with the evaluation subcommittee last week to go over her goals for the year. We made one minor adjustment. All in all, the goals were not very similar to last year's goals, given the abbreviated departure we had in the spring. Superintendent, you want to talk quickly for the committee about the overall goals?
Sure.
Sure.
I think with the, we kept some of the goals from that we had last year.
We're still looking at, working with the principals individually, meeting with them personally.
That's a personal goal.
That's a personal goal.
A professional goal of mine.
Always meet with the principals and have conversation with them. At least once a month.
An hour.
An hour.
One to two hours a month.
One to two hours a month.
And I try to get over there a lot, speak with them, make sure that I have some knowledge of what's happening in their buildings, where they're at personally, where they are professionally, and how the building's doing. And a lot of the conversations that we're having is instructional. And we're trying to move our team meetings and our administrative meetings to more of an instructional and strategic meeting, instead of just talking about management and operations all the time. And, you know, Tim, you're a principal, you get it, that a lot of times we get into the weeds and we talk about management and operations and attendance and what's happening here, what time the buses are going to arrive, and it's in a half-day schedule, what can we take out of the schedule, what time are lunches, where we are trying very hard and diligently to really look at what's happening on in the classroom, what we can do better in the classroom, and what the instructional supervisors can do to support what type of instructions happening in the classroom. And I think that that's really the role that I try to drive myself, not just to be an operationals or management or financial superintendent, but to also have the instructional piece with me. We moved a little bit. We, you know, obviously, we're not too sure about what's going to happen with the MCAS, and as you know, they've been postponed. So, it wouldn't be advantageous for me to try to compare year to year for the MCAS. It's just, it's not there. We didn't take them last year. I wouldn't have a comparison. And it's very difficult to have that data driven in the MCAS. So, we're looking at the MAP assessment that we decided to look at this year. And we're looking at it in, for the grade year itself, from the baseline data from the fall to the data that we find in the spring. So, we can look at overall growth of the student in a grade, in a classroom, and compared to his cohort of the same grade in the East Bridgewater School District, and not just around to the cohorts across the country, because we're not sure what they're doing with their data. Looking at putting together a subcommittee on facilities. I think that that was important for us to, as a district, to start to look at, especially putting a million dollars into a boiler system, over a million dollars in a roof at the central school. We really need to look at that building, because it is a cornerstone of the East Bridgewater Public School District. People love that building. It is the central school. It's the beginning of your partnership with the district. If you're a parent and when you have a child going into pre-K or kindergarten, but that building needs some work, and it needs some support, and it needs to be updated. And then, the Mitchell School, that needs some facilities work on it. And we need to look at what the district should look like. Is it a, you know, a pre-kindergarten K kindergarten center, and then a one-through-six building? Do we look at, you know, the high school, the junior, senior high school was built for the seven through 12 in it. That was one of the parameters that was given to the district and to the community for, to get that type of funding and to get the MSBA to give that project to us. I don't think that we're going, I think we're looking more at an accelerated repair and those types of programs. I don't think we're looking at looking at new buildings. I think we're looking at structural reconditioning and getting some new windows, new roofs, new fire alarms and systems in the building. Upgrading our, we've been upgrading our technology as we've gone, but, you know, there's much more to do here in the building. So, I think the facilities subcommittee, and that was part of that, we wanted to, we wanted to look at that. And we're going to still continue to, and I think the other one was continuing to work at the district guidance, social, emotional with our students, how to work in that area, how to support our students and their families better, and how to understand where our kids are today and where they should be tomorrow, and how we can support that system. So, I think that's, and some of those were from last year, and I think we just upgraded them, maybe gave them a little bit more meat this year, because we're in.
I think the group recognized the inherent difficulty with attaching yourself to any kind of data about growth this year, you know, student achievement, given that, you know, we're kind of all over the map with where the kids are. So, but I think MAP is a good starting point. I mean, it's, it's not something where, you know, we're just measuring kids' growth over the course of the year, not against a national cohort, because, you know, there's a lot of inequity around the country this year. So. Were there any questions for Superintendent about those goals? I know we have an action item for later on, but I wanted to have a chance to discuss it now if anyone had further questions.
I did forget one, is that to work with the, on the cultural diversity in the district. You know, we need to make sure that all students are included in our schools, and we are, have an inclusive school district. And we also need to look at staffing that becomes diverse, and has, and that we are inclusive. And we are trying those, trying to recruit in our human resource department, trying to recruit a diverse teaching staff and instructional assistance staff and custodial staff. We're trying to recruit and maintain a balance, and we hope that we can get there. But we also want to make sure that students feel comfortable coming to East Bridgewater regardless of creed, color, age, whether the student signed an IEP or a 504. All students should be included. And people ask me all the time that does our, does the data suggest that, that we are not, that we may, that we're not diverse enough, or that students feel hatred, students feel non-included? No, our data doesn't always say that, but that does not mean that it's not happening here. And it does not mean that we, that students may not want to let us know that, but we need to understand how students are feeling. And we need to ask better questions, and we need to understand maybe a little bit more about our student body all, and be more inclusive to that. And we probably haven't done a great job with that. So, and we are looking into that. Dr. Williams and I are both on doing our own professional development with that, working with Bridgewater State. Dr. Williams has, I think, been on a webinar for the last two weeks, and has a group of teachers working with her. I'm working with a consultant group for myself to become more, to bring a more inclusive atmosphere into the district. And I'm also working with the community and the EBCC. You'll see that tonight, that I've worked with them on a proclamation that the school district, I hope that you have seen and read, and think that it becomes more inclusive and it becomes more community-oriented, because we are all one. Yes, we're the school district, and then there's the town of East Bridgewater. But in all respects, we're one, and hopefully, we'll move that proclamation, and I hope that you like it. And then, we'll bring it up to the town and allow the town selectmen and women to look at that and go from there. So, that is, that's a big part of, I think, my evaluation as well this year.
Thank you.
Tim, I just wanted to comment, if I could say one thing. I just, I'm really thrilled about that goal, Liz. I think it's, we're moving in the right direction. I know in conversations, both at the school committee meetings, and the two of us have had conversations about this. I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm super thrilled that it's going to be formalized for us and the community members to really see the hard work that's going into this. And I know that this has been something that's been on the mind of students, of parents, and of teachers as well. So, I'm just grateful for this, and I think that's a, it's a really great inclusion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to mention something. You mentioned at the beginning, that goal is about, you know, hiring, you know, focusing on diversity with our hiring. And I admire that effort. I've been involved in districts before that, you know, work hard to have their faculty reflect the diversity of their student body. But I also know that is an incredibly difficult thing to do, because you can't control who applies. Well, you can, but it's to a limited amount how you control who applies for positions, and how far your outreach is. And you want to hire the best people for the job, but you need to be mindful of, again, you know, the diversity of your student body. So, hats off to you for pushing that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment about the goals? We can, that'll be an action item for later on in the meeting. Update from the budget subcommittee. John, do you want to give a quick rundown of what we talked about?
Okay. We reviewed the first pass of the budget, salary and non-salary. I think as far as producing the budget, I think we're in pretty good shape. It's probably the most comfortable I've felt putting together, putting together the budget since I've been here. I think we have a good understanding of what's in the budget and what's needed. Overall, next year, revenue-wise, may be tough. We haven't received any, any budget news of, on the revenue side for next year. I did receive notice this past week that the town is expecting us to produce two budgets, a level-funded budget, which is a 0% increase, and a level-service budget. I think I'm pretty much, pretty much done with both of those budgets. I'm, still continue to meet with the principals to talk salary and staffing. And I still continue to meet with the principals to talk about the non-salary expenses. So, like I said, the first draft is in good shape. There will be tweaks along the way as we get more information on grant funding and other, other funding. But I don't know. Tim, what do you, what do you think? I, I feel pretty good about the budget. I know it's going to be a tough year, but I think we're in good shape. Our collective bargaining agreements still have some work to do this year with system principals, custodians, ISAs, but I've made estimates and included those in the budget, but.
I think the thing, I think the thing I keep coming back to when we go over this is, and we've said it for years now, is, is that you've been working so hard over the last five years to position ourselves into a strong fiscal point, you know, with our revolving funds, with, with how we're structured, that if something like this, you know, if an economic situation, if this hits us, it doesn't destroy the district. You know, and we may have to make some very difficult choices this spring, but we're not, you know, looking at drastic wholesale layoffs or closing down programs and things like that. So, you know, that's, you know, kudos to you for that, for putting us in that position.
Well, thank you. And Liz has something to do with that, too.
No, no, I meant both of you. Yeah, that's fine. I just, like I said, I, I think we all know it's going to be a tough spring. Nobody's optimistic about the budget, but, you know, there was nothing in there that caused me to lose sleep that night. I mean, I think it was all within the realm of what we imagined would be likely, you know. It's going to be a tough year, but hopefully not a drastic year. So.
Yeah, I agree. We have a certain amount of flexibility that I think other towns don't have, which, which makes my life easier and makes you guys' life easier, too.
Yep. So, we're going to meet again. Did we say, what did we say, the end of January?
Yes.
I believe, I believe, was it mid-January or the end of January? I thought mid-January, maybe.
It was like around Martin Luther King Day, like, or that following week or something.
Questions for John or the budget subcommittee before we move on? Okay. And then, policy subcommittee. Now, I know the policy subcommittee told me that they were going to have something. I don't have anything in the materials.
We do not, at our last meeting, we met a few times, and at our last meeting, we decided that we would be bringing, to keep everything organized, we would be bringing a large group of policies to the, probably the second meeting in January, just to keep everything together. And there's nothing pressing.
Okay. So, those will be brought with the idea of giving it a first read at that meeting and then actioning in February?
Possibly, yes. There's some, there were some policies that had, like, very minor tweaks. I think Amanda had mentioned that in the last meeting, was like maybe a comma or a word change, which was very, very basic. And then, some of the ones that we have that we changed, same thing with that section that we were going through. And then, just some recommendations from the MASC. There's nothing, nothing major so far. I mean, we haven't come across anything major. So, I guess I'll have to keep you updated when we go through some other policies, because right now, there's nothing major to tell you about.
That's fine.
They could just be, we could potentially, since they're like all, if, say they're all minor changes, we could potentially vote on them at one time. I mean, it's up to you, it's up to you all if you want to vote on them in the first reading or the second reading. There's nothing major coming through right now. I mean, if anything changes, we could let you know.
Well, we'll give it a look when we, when we bring it forward to the whole committee and decide how we want to proceed at that point.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's Corner.
So.
So.
There is a list of things that we're going to go through, and I know that everybody wants to get to COVID. So, I'm going to go through the list of some other things very quickly to touch upon, and then, we're going to go and talk about our COVID numbers, where we are at as a district, some thoughts that we have, the meetings that myself, Dr. Williams are having daily with other districts. I was on with the Lighthouse today. We had 25 districts on late this afternoon. We did have one of the districts tell us what they were doing. They have done it, I think, around 5:00 PM this afternoon, and I was on texting with him earlier. So, and we'll talk about where we are at and our numbers, but I'm going to pass that down to Karen Clifford, our COVID officer, who works with Desi, who works with Sue Malloy on a daily basis. I think it's best coming from her. She knows the numbers. She's watching our contact tracing. She's doing a tremendous job. You can't say enough about her due diligence to this, and moving around the district as fluidly as she is, contacting teachers, parents, and principals throughout the day, and keeping myself or Dr. Williams up to date as quickly as we can, if one of us is in a meeting or this or that. So, let me go through a couple of these things that are quick, and we can get them out of the way. Grab and go meals. On Tuesday, December 22nd, the lunch program will distribute all grab and go meals for the multiple days. Families will be able to pick up multiple meals to cover multiple days. These days will be, pickup Tuesday, December 22nd, 8:15 to 10:15. Those meals will cover December 22nd and December 23rd. We will resume our regular schedule on Monday, January 4th. Once again, Mrs. Vaughn has asked me to just relay this to our parents. If you need more support than the 22nd or 23rd, we ask you to email her this week into next week prior to December 23rd. We will do the best that we can to make up an extra food bag for you to send out with you on the 23rd. Please let us know and email her directly.
Liz, before you move away from grab and go, if there is a snow day on Thursday, grab and go is canceled? If there is a snow day, which is looking more likely?
Grab and go is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That was today for tomorrow, for Wednesday. Thursday, if it was a snow day, we do not, we would not serve on a Thursday, which is the 16th.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to be sure of.
If it's a snow day, we don't serve.
We don't serve.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
No, so if, if today, if our grab and goes were here today between 8:15 and 10:15, so they were up here already, and tomorrow, they will have an 8:15 to 10:15 grab and go, and then, so they'll have that for tomorrow. Okay? And then, Thursday, we don't serve. The East Bridgewater grab and go health and safety update, we're working with the East Bridgewater Teachers Association, and we have the instructional assistants on that. We do have the principals on that. Health and safety update, we're trying to keep our communication lines open. We're meeting with the teachers. They, they let us know some of their issues, their concerns, and we're discussing with them and letting them know what we have done and what we are continuing to do. We've talked about the HVAC systems. We've talked about the PPEs, the supplies, the sanitation. We are having a company come in. Soul Source will be here on December 30th. They will be doing all three of our buildings. They'll be spraying our HVA systems. They'll be going from floor to ceiling, windows to the door. So, it's 360-degree coverage of each room, hallways, gymnasiums, cafeteria, and HVA systems. So, that'll be our thorough cleaning on December 30th. The building will be, all buildings will be closed on that day, and only for Soul Source and the custodial staff to be here. We also have, we've been having the seniors, the seniors came back last week, and I know some people had concerns of, of the seniors coming in the building. They are here by themselves. There are no other students here at the high school on that day, and the teachers are remote that day. There are a few teachers in the building. They even came down to see the kids last week, because it was exciting to see all of them. They sat on each side of the cafeteria. Cohort A was on one side, Cohort B was on the other, and then, they went to the auditorium. And Cohort A sat up in front, I think, and Cohort B in back. They ate breakfast as if they were in their cohorts, like they do every day when they are here at the school, and they had a nice time. I spoke with them. We livestreamed it, and then, I spoke with them about this is upon them, an incumbent upon them to do the right things. We can't go outside our own cohorts of our families. We can't go outside our own cohorts of the friends that we've been with if we're going to contain and stay and try to get back to school. The seniors did a really nice job. Tomorrow, they are in here. I think they're coming in from, I think it's at 9:00 to 10:30 or 9:00 to 11:00. They'll be coming in, looking at their schedules, and looking at their classes, and they're going to do like a sort of a mock run to see what it would look like if Mrs. Helkey's class, if they went up to English 12 AP at 8:30 in the morning, how many kids show up, and what would it look like. And they're just going to run through these, this mock schedule to see how it looks. And they've done a really nice job, the guidance counselors, the administration. And we're trying to, we're trying to put our best foot forward for these kids, and we're trying to get them back, and we're trying to support their college-esque atmosphere in the springtime. West Bridgewater does a really nice job of that. We're sort of replicating that, and some other districts do that. In the spring, the seniors look more college-esque. They start to look around in sort of an open campus, an open field, and we're going to try to get there. Do I know that we're going to do that? No. But it offers that opportunity on these next couple of Wednesdays, last Wednesday and this Wednesday, to come up here, meet with their principals prior, and they have Mr. Sylvia's total attention, along with Mr. Clements, the guidance, guidance staff, Karen Clifford, Dr. Williams was there, I was there, Tim, you stopped over. And it was really just to, it's, it's to show them that we are supporting them. We want to get there, and we'll try to get them back as soon as possible, whether that's January 23rd or March 1st. We're trying, and we're trying to get them back quick, sooner than later, and if we can get them in, we will. And some classes, I mean, we've got some classes still at six, just because of the cohort size and the class that it is. That class can go up to 19 here at the high school. We have room for 19 per class here at the high school. So, at the six feet that we have an MOA in agreement with. So, the kids are doing well. I think parents are happy about that. I can tell you, the kids were very social. They were smiling when they left here. They were thankful when they left here. And I said to a couple of kids as they walked out, I said, "Do you understand what we're trying to do?" And the kids were like, "Yes." They get it. And if you haven't been here, and you, and I, and the teachers would tell you, these kids want to be here. They're doing exactly what we're asking them to do, whether they're in first grade, ninth grade, or seniors. I mean, you can't imagine when you walk into that central school and you watch a child in first grade go to the bathroom, or coming back from the nurses, or delivering something to the office. They walk out of the classroom, they put their hand under the sanitizer, they sanitize their hands, they have the mask on, they walk down the hall. Before they go back into that room, they sanitize again. They are doing, they're quick learners. They have learned it, they know it, and they're doing a great job with it. So, you know, kudos to everybody for getting these protocols down and these safety measures going forward.
Before we move on to the seniors, I just want to ask, so. I, I think it's fair to say that, you know, I've heard from a few parents just that are concerned about just what the overall final product is going to look like once we get the kids back and once we figure out the schedule. And, you know, I kind of voiced this to you last week, is that, you know, obviously, we want the kids in school, social, emotionally, educationally, it's better. I don't want to run into a situation where I find out somebody didn't get into a college of their choice because something got cut. We could have avoided that. So, I know you don't have those final answers today, but it'd be fair to ask that at one of our January meetings, we might have some solid data about what exactly is getting cut, what's getting excused, what's not being offered to the kids.
I, I, nobody's going to get cut, English, math, chemistry. Those aren't the types of, and we're not saying, and we're not devaluing any course that's out there, or any teacher that is teaching any course. But if we have, and we used, I use physical education. I was a phys ed teacher. I taught health. I taught phys ed for a long time. If we have a child that's playing, if we have a student that's playing basketball, is an athlete, and is going to go to practice for an hour, hour and a half after school, we can waive that for a couple of weeks. It's not going to be waived for the entire year. It's for a point, just to get them back and to get them moving and to get them back to a senior year. We're not taking, reminder, if we can't fit a student, he always, or she always has the remote capacity to get into has the remote capacity to get into that room. That does not stop. So, we throw those things out and say, "Hey, listen, can we waive this?" Yes. "Can we excuse this?" Yes. "Can we do this for this course?" No, you cannot. And so, those are things that the guidance counselor's looking at, the administration is looking at, and we're not going to do anything that's going to hurt a child going to school. You know, so they are looking at that. So, I know what you're asking, and I've heard the same thing from teachers and from parents. We always have the capacity to go into the Google Classroom.
So, if a senior was taking, say, Spanish 5, and they found out that by coming back in person, they couldn't take Spanish 5 anymore, they still have the option to then stay in the existing setup we've had in the fall and participate in the Spanish 5 class?
Yep. Karen?
Hi. I don't know if you can see me. I think it's important to know that the biggest reason for doing this is to help the students that are struggling socially, emotionally. We have some students that are trying to work remotely and are unable to manage all of their classes. So, that's really the point that we're trying to achieve, is to look at those classes and say, "Okay, this is a semester-long elective. This is not really germane to your graduation credits or any kind of a college application." We're not looking to waive any full-year classes that would benefit a student's GPA or college application process. Does that make sense? So, if the students that have already achieved, say, their applied arts credits, the 10 credits that they need for graduation, and they're taking another, you know, business class, if that's not necessarily something that they can handle or juggle remotely, then that would be something that we would waive for the rest of the semester.
I get it. I think there was a perception amongst some in town that some seniors were just going to come in for English and math, and that's not the case. I just want to make sure we're putting out what is the case.
And Katn?
I actually, just on a personal level, I mean, I did go in and I talked to Jeff just, you know, so I could understand too. Obviously, no AP courses are being dropped. This isn't an opportunity for seniors to just completely free up their schedule and breeze in and breeze out. And when guidance is looking at their schedules, if they're currently in a class and their current grade isn't as favorable as they would want it to be, then the recommendation is they continue that class, even if it's an elective, just so they can continue to work on their grade. And parents should also be, you know, reviewing this with their seniors, too. It's not, I don't, I don't think the intention is for the seniors to just kind of take this and run with it. I'm sure some seniors might try. And again, there's no, just to reiterate, there's no dropping of classes per se. It's an administrative, they're being administratively excused, at least for this short time period, so they can look at capacity in classes and look, do they have to move a class to a lecture hall to accommodate, you know, within social distancing and all those guidelines? And to your point, if it's still a large class because of there are juniors in it as well, the seniors will still have the option to come home, hence the open campus, and call into the class remotely. So, it's just really looking at this initial short period of time to administratively excuse varsity athletes from gym perhaps, or an elective that they don't need for graduation credit, but they may continue once everything settles out.
But if they stop, say they're in Spanish 5 and they stop it for three months, how do they get back in because of the last three months of class?
It's not going to be a reprieve, though.
Well, whatever. Even if it's two weeks, one builds on the other.
The student has the option. You're not going to take...
I'm going to explain that tonight, but I know that that's one of the questions that's been raised to me with parents. We don't need to explain that tonight, but it needs to be explained to the parents because that's one of the things. You know, the kid's like, "Well, if I, if I can't, if I drop it, how do I catch back up?" Because, you know, they're building block classes.
Right. No one's dropping...
Are they not doing this December 21st? Is that off the table now? Because I'm confused. You were talking about January, March. Are they not coming back next Wednesday, next Monday? Or they are?
We never had them coming back next Monday. I hit it, sorry. They were coming back this Wednesday. We're trying to make sure we can fit them, and then there was going to be a conversation at this Wednesday to see what they could do. We wanted to bring them in on December 21st and 22nd. I don't know where we're going to be next week. I have not heard from the principals. I do not direct that. That's a high school principal that is working with the seniors right now. So, when, after he gets done tomorrow and they have a chance to look over things Thursday, he'll let me know. It may be coming back after on January 4th where we would start them in, when we start school up again. It may be the 11th, January 11th, when he's ready. We're just trying, we use these Wednesdays to try to create some capacity to talk to these seniors. And it was from the high school principal and guidance and special education that we felt that this, and the parents that were saying, we're losing our kids. These kids aren't staying home because of the COVID. They are staying home because they are becoming disinterested, and it's not just happening here at East Bridgewater. It's happening in many districts at the senior level. It's, "Hey, listen. I'm going to stay home. I can do it remote, and this is what I'd like to do, and we do not want to lose our students. We want to keep them engaged and we want to keep them here." So, I will let everybody know. And once the principal lets me know where he's at, if he feels he can do something, we'll let you know.
Can I just ask one quick question? I'm assuming in this conversation, with guidance and everything, we're, we're keeping in mind the individual student. I guess my concern, like, you know, I want to say, we're all, our students, ourselves included, we're all surviving a pandemic, and living and learning through this is a whole different thing than we've all experienced before, and so success looks different now. I understand that. But I guess my concern is an equity issue with, our top students are likely going to stay in all of their courses. They may be on a different path. They may have already, you know, gotten college acceptances and so on and so forth. I guess my concern are students who are maybe struggling a bit more in that middle of the pack where it'll be easy, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
I don't want that to be on two tracks of students. That's my concern.
And that's, that's why we wanted to bring them back, is that there are no tracks, and that we want our kids back in school, and we want to get them here because we are getting disengagement. You're all, like you said, you have that, that upper group. Yeah, they have been accepted to colleges, and then, "Okay, I'm ready to go." So, some of those students are saying, "I've already been accepted. I'm going to just relax a little bit and step back." Then you have some other kids that are in that middle of the road, like, "What am I going to do here? And I really got to hit this next second, third, and fourth quarter," and really just hit it home run. It's hard at home. It's hard to stay focused. It's hard to look around when it's just you, where if I'm in a class, I can see my buddies and see my peers and say, "Boy, there's another kid that's going to go to Stonehill. There's another student that's going to go to Massasoit. There's another student that's going to go to trade school." So, we want to make sure that we're hitting everybody. That, that's really what this is. We're not dropping anything. We're not giving up on a student. We're not giving up. And I have to, I can't tell you enough. The individual attention by the guidance, by guidance and by the administration and the teachers on this has just been tremendous. And I think that that's why I'm saying, I don't know where they're going to be tomorrow. I just went down and told the students last week, "I'm supporting this. I'm supporting your principal. He's pushing for this." I got two telephone calls right when we were done last week, two superintendents of area districts saying, "We're looking at you. We're watching this. We're thinking about how to do it, too, because we're afraid." It's, this is senioritis, and it's happening early. So, but I, I mean, that's something that is out there, and we're looking at it. So, yes.
The last thing I just want to throw out there, you know, is that I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, when you're looking at student scheduling, you know, typically in a normal year, you know, you have the springtime to plug kids into, you know, electives and courses, and then you have the entire summer to plan out schedules and check, go through each schedule and find conflicts and move kids around and deal with class size issues. And, you know, you're kind of doing this mid-year without the benefit of that time to do it behind the scenes, which I think is why I'm willing to take a step back and kind of let it play out, is I understand that you can't just flip a switch and say, "Okay, next Monday, here we go." I just wanted to voice that, you know, that there are those in the community that are concerned about it, and I feel that, given the time to work this out, it'll be fine, but I wanted to make sure that we're upfront about what their concerns are.
Sure. I mean, we, no matter what we do, in any respect of anything that we're trying to do today or tomorrow, whether it's in pre-K or K, or whether it's ninth grade or it's with the seniors, we're trying to make it as normal as possible for our kids and as socially acceptable for our kids as well, and have their peers with them. Dr. Williams is going to talk a little bit about the survey. We know, and Desi knows, and Karen Clifford would tell you right now. Jay Fallon is here this evening to talk about it. The social and emotional stress on the kids since March 13th till now is all of the, all of the issue right now. I mean, it really is. Teachers are doing a terrific job on instruction. They know that, they know their material. They're doing well in instructing that material. The big part is, how is a kid feeling inside? You may not see it from the outside, but what is that student doing on the inside? Because the parents are seeing it, and I can tell you, I do get a lot of information and a lot of emails from, from parents. "Please help. What can we do? Can there be something different?" So, that's one of the reasons we're trying to do this. But we're not dropping any courses. We're not letting any kids out. We're not saying this is skate home and skate for free. This is, we value everybody, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a student, whether it's physical education, whether it's drama, music, you know, mechanical drawing, whatever we have to offer, everybody's valued because everybody's going to do something different. So, all right? Okay, thank you. I just, I want to keep going because I know this, I know that we've got to get to Karen and Dr. Williams. East Bridgewater Community for Change proclamation, that's really just for the information of the school committee and for you to look over, and I hope that you accepted the change. We did some changes. I did work with one of the members, I think a week or two ago. Nadia Clancy actually and I worked on this together, and we went through and we sort of wordsmithed some of the areas and did some, we moved some things around. But I think it's a fully inclusive document. You see some highlighted areas, which we changed around a little bit from the original. I've put it in my evaluation, so we know that the district, the principals, the schools will follow a more inclusive and more diverse type of school district, and that we acknowledge that we have diversity. We acknowledge that we need to work on our inclusivity, and that we work to acknowledge that, no, maybe our kids aren't telling us that they feel different, but they do feel different, and we need to acknowledge that. So, I just wanted this to be brought to you. I hope that you are in favor of it, because I'd like to move it to the Board of Selectmen. And I told, I told Mr. Noble, I told Mrs. Julius that I'd be working on this, and that it would come to them, and I hope that the school committee would endorse.
So, I didn't realize when we committed with the agenda that we were looking down at that being an action item tonight. Is that something that we could schedule as an action item for our next meeting, or were you really hoping for it to be tonight?
Well, I don't know if it's an action item, Tim. I just think it's more to bring it to the school district as this is something that's going to, you know, go with me into that, my evaluation, but that we endorse this, not with an action item by saying, "Yes, I endorse this," because it's not a policy. It's really just to say, we recognize that the community is different, that we need some more inclusive practices, and that we all are different, and that we all need to, we all need to embrace that, that difference. And it's really the, it's for, it's for the East Bridgewater community, and I just, they've asked me to spearhead it really with the EBCC, and Dr. Williams and I have met, and we just thought that we would bring it to our school committee to say, "This is something that we believe that the community should look at, and I just wanted you, I wanted to get it out here for the school district."
Can I roll back one, one topic point, just really, really quick? Because I thought this was really, really pertinent. One of the parents talked to me about, you know, two years ago, our summer reading theme was resiliency. And the parent and I, and I tend to agree that this may be the time that we revisit some of those themes and things that were done as part of the summer reading program. I don't remember it that well, but just a thought. We don't even really need to talk about it tonight. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, get people thinking that, you know, we did do a resiliency theme in the district, and maybe we bring something back related to that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it. We'll bring it back. That was it. And then the last is, we have an MOA with Lucini Bus Lines that we have been working with, Bill Lucini. This is really goes to the town, and we wanted you to see this, and I'm going to actually bring it up to Mr. Noble in the morning. There's no action item for you to take. I just wanted you to see the Lucini Bus Lines MOA that the town and the school district engage in. This is really for, the town will, will see this and will be able to commit into this. Last year, we had an MOA with them at the end where we went back and forth and back and forth. This is very close to, for a student, working with other districts more north of us. Mr. Lucini is working with us, Bridgewater, Rainham, West Bridgewater, East End, Sandwich, and John and...
Is it an M.O.A. with the district? Why don't we have to vote on that?
I believe because the, because the town enters this, they pay for our busing. Am I correct, John? John, am I correct on that? How we did this last year?
I didn't hear what you said, but I think we voted on the MOA last year with the school committee.
Okay. I was, I didn't know if we voted for it here or up at the town, so.
No, I believe the school committee voted upon it. This is not final. We're still, would negotiate and come back to the school committee with the final draft of the agreement.
We vote on in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this being done with every, every district between Lucini and...
Yes. It's across the board. I am, though, going to recommend that we accept this. I did talk to Bill Lucini. He did, he did take a loan during the COVID. He needs to, just like we do with Plymouth County, we have to get our records in before December 30th. He did ask me for the approval so that he could start pushing this forward with his accountants and attorneys. It went over to John. John has looked at it with the financials. It's gone over it with Nick, and I think that I did tell Mr. Lucini that we try to get it back up to him tomorrow. I'm going to call him tomorrow and tell him that you have seen it, and that we'll try to take a vote on it in another week, because he needs it by the 30th. So, that's where we're at on that. John, and that, that was really where we were at. Okay.
Okay.
But I'd like to, I mean, we're pretty close on this. We don't have another meeting before the 30th, John. That's why I'm...
We, we can, we can call a meeting. I'm sure we can get everyone together for a few minutes. I'm not worried about that.
Okay. I just...
Let us know when you think you're close, and we can put a time in the books.
Okay.
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 Ready?
Ready.
I'm going to switch seats. I'm going to hand it down to Karen Clifford for the COVID conversation.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
So, I'm going to talk about the COVID update, and I just want to start with the website. I know that we've had some conversations with some of the school committee members, as well as some parents and some faculty regarding what our dashboard looks like. So, I have updated that on the website so that it's the first thing that you go to when you open up the file. All of that other information is still... All of that other information is still accessible. It's just over on a menu. So, when you look at that first page, you don't see all of the task force information, all of the notification letters. Everything was on that one page, so I think it was difficult to find what you were looking for. Now, the first thing you see is the COVID dashboard, and everything else is still accessible on the menu. So, I did send out a notice to the community last Friday about that update. And I got a couple of pretty favorable responses that it was easier. So, hopefully, you'll have a chance to glance at that and see. I'm also going to start updating the dashboard. It says on the website Mondays and Thursdays, but I think that my Mondays have been so busy. I'm going to make it Tuesdays and Fridays, so I will make that update on the website. And you will see the dashboard updated tomorrow morning. But I just wanted to highlight some things from last Thursday to this Monday. That we have a total of 38 positive students in the district. We have 19 that have, staff members that have tested positive in the district since September. So, total of 57 between staff and students in the district. We have tracked 499 students, and only 38 have been positive. 224 have been negative, and 39 have had alternative diagnoses. One of the newest stats since last Thursday is that at one school, we did have nine close contacts. And at another school, we did have 18. So, those are larger groups. The, the one building with the 18, they're not all related. Some of them might have been a group of three or four. Those are, again, outside. We have one possible in-school transmission that I'm tracking. And the timeline, because it's not a perfect science, it's difficult for me to ascertain that it actually was, that the positive stems from this close contact, based on when the symptoms started. But, we did quarantine an individual who then later turned positive. So, that's the one possible that we have in district. The influx from last, the last update, I believe, is because the Thanksgiving impact has finally reached its peak. We've also added winter sports into the mix. You'll notice that this week, I did send out a letter yesterday for each building. The junior, senior high school, I identified four people that had tested positive. At the Mitchell, there was two, and at the Central, three. So, that's nine, you know, that's three letters that I sent out, because I wasn't going to send out nine individuals. But I identified that there was four individuals at the junior, senior high school. Not a lot of close contacts, but everybody was contacted. It needed to be quarantined, and hopefully, with the quarantine, that will work to reduce further transmission.
Karen.
Open it up.
Open it up. Do we know how many, how many people we have in quarantine currently? Regardless of where the contact was? Do you know how many, sorry for the birds. They heard me. Do you know how many we have in quarantine, period, across the district?
So, I do not know that right at this moment. I can tell you that the additional, the nine close contacts and the 18 close contacts are, you know, that's 20, that represents 27 students that are additionally in close, in quarantine. I have to go back to the students that were in quarantine before to determine who has come back to school. So, I have to look at that quarantine number individually each time. So, I've got the student numbers set, and that will go up tomorrow with the updated quarantine versus isolation. So, you'll know how many are out of school.
I'm sorry, are we doing 10 or 14 days?
We are still with the 14 days. We have, Desi has not adopted the 10 days yet that the CDC and the Department of Public Health have put out. So, we have not adopted that into the school yet. Given, given the numbers, it would not be my recommendation at this time. The Board of Health is still.
I guess somebody asked me, and I said, I think it's still 14. I don't think we voted it.
Right, and so, the Board of Health is still instructing every positive, you know, every individual in East Bridgewater, and they're alerting them to the 10-day quarantine, and telling them that schoolchildren are not, or teachers, are not allowed back into the building until the full 14, regardless of the test. But the benefit for the new CDC guidelines is that then that, that individual can move about in the community a little bit more, and then can see more family members, or, you know, enjoy other activities that are out of school. If they do the negative tests on day eight, they can return after day 10 asymptomatic.
Karen, I just have a comment. I know everyone is, is, you know, concerned about transmission and safety, as well as transparency on behalf of the district. I just want to say on a personal level, I know I, I got a call yesterday, everything ended up being fine. But I give you much credit, because I feel as though the way the situation was handled was due diligence to the nth degree. It's not as though it's just, oh, well, maybe. Based on what was explained to me yesterday, I really feel comfortable knowing that everything is taken into consideration and given very quick and thoughtful consideration. And the fact that, literally, I got a text, and then I got a phone call within minutes from each other, erring on the side of caution. So, I know how convoluted this can be. I mean, I don't even understand with all of the changing requirements and data, et cetera. But yesterday made me feel really comfortable that due diligence is, is being done. And, and I thank you and appreciate all of the efforts. I cannot imagine how long days you must have a lot of the time.
They're not as long as Sue Malloy, so I'm okay. Thank you, though. I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I just do want everybody to know that I do go through bus lists, and special ed, and IEPs, and service providers, and all of those things as carefully as we can. And still try to make the quickest alert to people, so that we can get students in quarantine and stop the spread.
Karen, thank you for listening on that COVID dashboard. I know it was just one more thing on your list. I just, I've seen so many other districts use something like that as a positive communication tool. I thought it would be really helpful for our families to understand what's going on. So, I, I truly appreciate it.
Sure.
Sure.
Anything else relative to COVID?
Yes, John.
Yes, John. Jay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, how are you, everyone? I know that there was some question about numbers for students on IEPs, or students with disabilities, who are coming in four days a week, and some questions about students who are going remote. So, we, we got those numbers together. I know that they're in your packets. I'll just hit some highlights, and then if there are any questions, I'll certainly answer those. So, we, currently, we have 275 students in the district who are coming four days a week into our school, not counting our pre-K and K, because they're, they're five days a week currently. So, I didn't add them into our numbers. But grades 1 through 12, we've got 275 students. 143 of those are students on IEPs. We've got, we've got another 16 who are on 504 plans, and a smaller number who are ELL students as well. There are various reasons why students are maybe of high needs. I know that when we talked back in, in the beginning of school, and school coming back in, the state had highlighted certain things, such as homelessness, ELL, students with disabilities, and high needs. So, we've put all these numbers together. We've looked at our students who are remote as well. When we look at students with disabilities, for, for district-wide, we're only, we're only about 13% of students who are remote. Those students were remote from the beginning of the year, though. These are students that families opted due to medical needs, or medical needs in the extended family. And we're just meeting their needs, we're meeting their needs remotely, as we are any other student who's on a remote day. So, I don't know if there's any questions anyone has for me. I'll certainly answer any question you have. Something comes up later on, you all know where to reach me.
Do you have, I, I just have one question. Do you have further capacity at this point to bring back other students on IEPs that are not? Are there currently students on IEPs that are not there four days a week? I missed that.
So, there are, Tim. We've offered, any of our students who have academic needs, who have maybe a multitude of needs, we've offered that out to families. Some families have opted to, to stay in a hybrid model, and that's obviously a choice that they have. We do have, we do have capacity. My IEP coordinators have been, have been working very diligently as they go through their meetings. They meet with every family. They look at this thoughtfully, and have all discussions with the team about whether, whether students' needs are being met in that hybrid, whether they need that four-day. And if they need that four-day, they make that offer.
Jay, can I, and Jay, I don't know if this question is for you or somebody else on the team. Given that we have some capacity, if a parent, I'm sorry, if a parent.
Alright, I don't know if I was answering you or the bird. Go ahead.
It's the bird, I'm sorry. If a parent feels that their child is struggling, and is not an IEP, but we have capacity, can, who should they reach out to to at least have that discussion?
So, they would, they would reach out to the building administration? You know, again, again, but you gotta, you gotta remember that when we're talking about, if the student has a disability, then we, we would look at that at, or an IEP meeting. If it's a student without a disability, they'd go through the building administration, and they would have that discussion with them.
So, if it's a student with an IEP or 504, they go through you? If it's a student just struggling, because they're struggling, they go to administration?
So, if, yeah, if it's a student with a, with an IEP or with a 504, they can, they can certainly talk to the building administration as well, but they can go right through the IEP coordinator, or through my office. They can call me. We'll get it all set up and, and have a meeting and go through it. If it's a student without a disability, and they're looking to get them to support, they can go right through building administration, or guidance.
Perfect, thanks, Jay.
No problem, Teresa.
Any other questions for Jay? Thank you so much. We appreciate, I know it's not easy, so thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
So, the last thing that I have for you, Tim, before I hand it over to Dr. Williams, is I sent out an email and EB notifications today, and I just want to hit upon this, that Desi has given the authority to the superintendents to either call a traditional snow day or a remote learning day in inclement weather. We are looking at some inclement weather coming into the South Shore this week, and we're watching it. We started watching it this morning, the Lighthouse Group, at about 9:00 AM. We've all had our weather channels up all day. It does look like it's going to hit us. We usually don't make these calls till the day before, the night before, or that morning of. And as I explain to parents, I try to go as quickly as possible, and I try to get that call out by 5:30 AM, if it will, if it's a snow day, a traditional snow day. I just want everybody to know, traditional snow day would be, everybody gets a day off, relax, go out and sled, do something fun. Teachers don't have to do remote learning. Kids don't have to do remote learning. It's that old type of traditional sto, uh, snow day, where you can have some fun with your friends outside. Or only the friends that you've been in your cohort with. Don't go outside your cohort, but stay with your cohort. If we do have a snow day, and we decide to call it a remote snow day, that will be with instruction that will be on that day. And we will not lose that day in June. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the difference. And we'll try to make, saying that the storm is coming, and we are watching it, and I'll try to make it as soon as I can to get everybody ahead of it.
For clarification, did you say that if you called a traditional snow day, you wouldn't, we would not lose the day in June?
A traditional snow day? I have five days put into the calendar, but yes. So, you would lose that day. You would always, you know, you would just tack that day on. But, so, you would want, but I have, I also look at the district to see where we're at. And if you need a traditional snow day, where kids need to go outside and blow off some steam, I want to try to do that, too. Or the adults. Or the adults. And that's, right. Dr. Williams?
I just have two questions.
Yep.
On that, sorry. One is, at least for Amanda and I, we don't see the EB notifications anymore. I don't know why I don't, where I still have a kid, kind of in the district. But can you just add the school committee to that, so we see them going forward?
From my office.
Thank you. And what is, and you don't have to answer this now, but if you could put it in some kind of communication with the, whatever call you make on Thursday, is power outages. Because I know some kids go, got into a frenzy when they lost power on a remote day, not, I don't know, a month or so ago. So, if we could just clarify, you know, what kids are supposed to do in a power outage? And hopefully, we won't have, sounds like a light snow, but just to keep them from going into a frenzy.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Williams and I talked about that, that when the kids lose power. I mean, we can't do anything about that. We try to, we try to, we do talk to the DPW, who usually does have some communication with National Grid, and they'll try to get ahold of Mr. Shea, or myself, or Dr. Williams. And they'll tell us, you know, we're an hour away, we're two hours away, we're three hours away from getting kids, to getting your community with power, or this street with power, or this tree up off this wire, a new pole up, or whatever the case may be. But, yeah, if, if a student loses power, I certainly would boost my power on my Chromebook tomorrow during the day, if I thought that after I got done with my work Wednesday afternoon, I would put it on the charger and make sure that it's charged up for Thursday, just in case we do get the snowstorm. But if a child loses power, he's absolutely given that time to make up that work. And so, that, I mean, we have teachers that lose power, too, and staff that lose power. Superintendents lose power. So, sometimes we make do, and we'll always give that student an excuse for that.
The problem, one of the issues with losing power is, when you lose power, you usually lose Wi-Fi also, so then you just can't get on anyway.
Right.
Right.
And that's, that's something that we'll deal with.
That's something that we'll deal with.
I did have my, my staff ask me, well, what happens if you lose power on Thursday? If you lose power, you lose power. You can't create power. So, there you go, enjoy the quiet, you know? So, our families, I think, have to understand that internet and power may go out on Thursday. And if it does, go sledding.
Exactly.
And just, a quick point of note, and I know earlier in the year, this was, was an issue, but email notifications, the EB notifications, I don't think are still consistently getting through to all parents. I just had a parent text me earlier, asking, you know, if there were still issues with the notifications. And I don't know that there's really any way for a parent to know whether they're consistently getting the notifications. So, is this resolved, or being worked on still?
So, I, I can tell you that, if, if you don't get an EB notification, or you hear that there was a notification that went out, and you said that you didn't get one, if you notify your high school principal, or the central school principal, or the Mitchell school principal, or you notify central office, the superintendent's office, and say, I didn't get this. We have a report that we run, and we can tell if you got it, or you didn't get it. And if it went to somebody else and not you, because John Shea's name may come up, but it may be under a different address or telephone number, and we try to figure that out. And we come back to that student, or to that parent, and say, this is why it didn't come to you. But we can check to see if people receive our notifications or not. But, yeah, John did look into that with, I think they, Mary Ann looked into it. The tech department has looked into it, and it's a pretty good sys, it's a very good system. It tells us whether you receive it or not. So, if you didn't get it, identify yourself to the principal, or to the superintendent's office, and we'll run the scan, and then we'll get, we'll get you back on.
Thank you, guys.
Karen, just clarify that a parent can go onto the portal, and make sure, and edit any of their information, and make sure that the correct information on the portal is accurate. And that usually helps, too. For email addresses. Uh, Dr. Williams?
Uh, Dr. Williams?
I think John was, I pushed him up.
Because I pushed him up.
Good evening, everyone. One thing that's actually not on the agenda that I wanted to bring up, that is related to the conversation about COVID and the amount of tracking that's being done, people that are quarantined as close contacts, but even those that are now being pushed out a couple of days, waiting for test results to come back. That has compiled the amount of absences that we need to fill with substitutes on top of. the amount of absences that we need to fill with substitutes, on top of just the standard absences that we deal with on a yearly basis, with unrelated COVID sicknesses, or personal day requests, and having conversations with the building principals. We are struggling getting daily subs at the current rate. The current rate is $75, which, if you break that down by the hour, it is less than minimum wage for the hourly rate. So I did meet with the superintendent, as well as Mr. Shea, and Mr. Shea said that he has already budgeted, anticipating that this is something that we've been talking about for the last couple of years, and it is something that the school committee needs to approve. So we would like to recommend that we move from $75 a day to $90 a day. So I don't know if multiple readings are needed, or if it's something that the committee can consider and approve tonight, so that we can move forward with that, as building principals are trying to secure substitutes in their buildings.
We can, we can move on that tonight, we can talk about that at the end.
Great.
We, I thought we had already done that, no, Gina?
We thought so, too, but we have, we could not find it in any of the minutes when we went back.
I think, I think we brought it up and discussed it, increasing it, but we never took the vote on it. I just want to, I just want to, I just want to say this, and I think Gina will remind everybody. We, we talked to, I talked to the districts today when we were talking about this. You could, you could give $200 a day right now to get subs. There's no subs out there. Tim, you're a principal, it's hard to secure them. They're not out there right now. If you were subbing, you probably were picked up at this time for a long-term position someplace. Maternity leaves are high this year, we, in our district, in all districts. But just to say, I mean, it's not just the, I mean, we're trying to be competitive with our districts, neighboring districts, but I, we could probably go up to $400 a day, and it's, there's nobody out there. And we, and we've hired three long-term subs just to keep here in the district, and we're paying them at a higher rate. So I just wanted to just make sure that people understand that.
I agree, Liz. I taught math yesterday, because we have no subs. I mean, it's, it's not just an East Bridgewater thing.
Great. Next on the agenda was flu shots.
Just for the record, it's not just a teaching, teaching thing either. I think every profession is feeling the pinch of these quarantines and testing delays. We got to get more testing down here.
A quicker turnaround. Next on the agenda was flu shots, and as you are aware, both the governor and the commissioner of education have put forward the requirement of all students K-12 needing flu vaccinations by December 31st. It is ultimately something that the school committee needs to discuss, as to what the requirements are going to be after December 31st, for those students who have not received their flu vaccinations. Just to give you an update at this point in time, and some perspective as to a typical year versus this year. In a typical year, last year, as well as the year before, we averaged about 700 students in the district that received flu shots. To date, as of today, 1,137 students in the district have had their flu shots. So we're still right around 50%, and that's the entire district, even students that are fully remote, because we would be looking for all students to receive that flu vaccination, knowing that everybody is going to return ultimately to school at some point in time. The nurses have sent out-
Yeah, a quick question on that, that 1,137, does that include those who have submitted the appropriate acceptable exemptions, or is that separate?
It does have, it, that would, number would include those that have submitted exemptions as well. So we have 1,137 who have been cleared, one way or another, either having the flu vaccine, or have submitted verification of exemption. So-
And we have, what, about 2,200 students?
Correct, yes. So the nurses have been sending out letters, parents probably have been receiving those letters, that we're looking for that compliance, and we're looking for the verification for parents to send in, so that we can be assured that students have the vaccination by December 31st. In talking at the administrative level, our recommendation would be, and the commissioner is going to give us some more clarification on this, but at this point in time, we may be looking at students needing to be fully remote, accessing their education from home, until they can either show verification of the flu vaccine, or the proper documentation for exemption. So.
So Gina, I, I think, you know, I was, this is, you know, vaccines are obviously a hot button topic with a lot of people, and I think if we're going to make an informed, educated, sensible decision as a committee, I think I would ask two things. One is, I would ask, you know, when we break for the winter break, just the actual count of how many kids have been vaccinated at that point, so we know how many kids we're talking about. And then, I'd like to ask, if you and Liz could just propose a couple different courses of action, you know, just give us some options. Because I think we could go round and round all day long, as a committee of six, on what's the best path. But if you give us, you know, two or three paths that you're thinking of, and let us hash that out, I think that would be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. And the one thing-
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the one thing that we 100% agree on is not denying students' access from receiving their education. So at the bare minimum, that they would receive it remotely, if that's, you know, the decision of the committee. Teresa, did you have a question?
Yeah, the, you said, the last couple of years, it's been around 700. Given that it is not required, do we know if that number's accurate? Like, if you didn't have to report, do you know what I'm saying? Like, how did we get that number? Did people just report it anyway, or?
So, so our nurses have access to state data, so I'm assuming it's even from pediatrician's office that have reported that vaccination as well. So when I asked Mrs. Berendret, our lead nurse, she did have exact numbers, 735, who had received it in 2018, 702. And then when she gave me the most updated information on this year, she had given me a number, and then the very next day, she said, oh, the state just updated their numbers, it's actually now 1,137. So I'm assuming there is a tracking mechanism through, whether it's pediatrician's office, or CVS, or there is a way that they're tracking those vaccinations.
Just a question on that. How, I got an email saying I needed to, you know, show proof of a flu shot for one of my boys. What is it that they're looking for? If other parents are wondering, too. I know you said that there's tracking done, and there's data being handed down from the state. So if my son goes and gets his vaccination at CVS, for example, what documentation would, would he need?
So, and I think the reason why we're looking for it from parents, because I don't know how much of a delay there is between the school district getting that information, and we want to make sure that we have it as quick as possible. So my own children had theirs at CVS, and they actually, unlike a, you know, when you pick up a prescription, you have that receipt on the prescription package, it was actually written up on that type of receipt, and that's what I gave to the nurse's office.
So that's acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. Just, just in case people are wondering what's acceptable, if it's not on a pediatrician vaccination sheet. Okay.
And so if, for example, students had their flu shots back in September, October, then it's, there's a good probability that those numbers are updated in the state's database?
I would think at this point in time, they are, yes. And if, if people didn't receive a letter, then obviously they've been tracked already as either receiving it, or providing the exemption documentation.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda, it's written as cohorts, but I believe this is more about the survey that I had talked about at our last meeting, and the importance of us diving a little bit deeper as to, you know, how is the hybrid learning, or fully remote learning, whatever learning model students are in, how is it going from all perspectives? And, and I talked about, you know, us looking at triangulating the data, so that we're not only looking at student perspectives, but we're looking at teacher perspectives, and we're looking at parent perspectives. So in your packets, you do have survey results, I'll be sharing this out with staff, as well as posting it for families as well. And I just want to be clear that this is really the beginning of the work that will be done, based on the information that we've received. So we really looked at four different areas. One being the social emotional needs of our students, from everybody's perspective, the learning model that we're currently working in, from everyone's perspective, the safety measures that we currently have in place, in all of the buildings, from everyone's perspectives, and the communication. Because all of those things, I feel like are the major things that we've been talking about since the beginning of the school year. You know, certainly the physical safety of everyone within the building, the learning model, and you know, whether it's, do we just want our kids back in school because the hybrid's not working, or is it things that we can change about the hybrid model, to make the hybrid model as good as it possibly can be, knowing we all acknowledge it's never going to be a replacement for in-person learning. Keeping an eye on the, the social emotional needs of our students, and that, and the isolation, the increase in, in anxiety and in stress. On the call with the commissioner last week, pediatric organizations are, you know, the growing concern of the social emotional health of our students, is starting to supersede the physical health of, of COVID in children. So being mindful of that. And then there's been lots of conversation about the communication. Are we giving enough communication? Are we being clear with our communication? Do parents feel comfortable accessing the, the teachers, or the building administration, or district-level administration? So those were the four prongs. In the report, I did not include communication, because that actually was rated high from all perspectives, where parents are feeling very comfortable about reaching out to teachers. They feel that teachers are being very open with their communication and their frequency. Certainly, people want more, but they're, they're feeling it's helpful, it's clear, they're comfortable with how often. So I, I figured, all right, we'll, we'll table that one for right now, and really focus on social emotional needs of our students, the learning models that we're currently in, and how we improve that. And then I did include the safety measures, although in the survey, you'll see, for students especially, they've rated their, their comfort level with the safety measures. Although the high school did, the students did report, they don't like traveling in one direction, especially if they should be going left to go to their next class, and they have to walk all the way around the building. But their comfort level, and feeling secure about the safety measures in place. There was a little discrepancy between teachers and staff, and just to clarify, teachers are classroom teachers, and staff would be all of the personnel within the district. And there was a little discrepancy in the safety measures, and, and the comfort level. Staff felt more comfortable, and we'll have to dive deeper with that, to see if it's more about being in a classroom with students, as opposed to working about the building and other capacities. But the two that I, I want to highlight quickly, and like I said, you know, there'll be more to come in the future, because what's going to come out of this survey is opportunities for us to revamp some of the things, and, and like I said before, dive a little bit deeper. Also with the health and safety, as the superintendent mentioned, we do have a health and safety committee for the district. So at the next meeting with them, we will be looking at specifically the questions around health and safety with the health and safety committee, so that they can help us to kind of uncover where some of the discomfort is, and how we can make those improvements. With the SCL, I had a PD Academy meeting last week, and we all unanimously decided that really will be the focus of our next professional developments that are coming up. And it'll be sort of a combination of self-care for our, our teachers, because we want to make sure that they're feeling social and emotionally healthy, as well as supported, and not burning out. But then also, training around how they can best support the social emotional needs of our students. We had about 30, between 30 and 35% of our parents and teachers expressing heightened concerns over the social emotional needs of the students. And I think when we get to 30%, you know, that's a significant amount of, of people that are expressing some concerns over the health and safety of students. With the students filling out the survey, the nice part of it is, the surveys are connected to each student. So when students expressed extreme concerns about their health and safety, we can get councils directly connected with those students. So it makes it important for us to, to have that information, to know which students that we need to directly reach out to. But in general, we can put some things in place, so that students are feeling more connected. We asked students specifically about their connectedness to adults, and their connectedness to peers. And our, our grade three through five felt more connected to adults than our six through 12 students. So we'll be looking at additional ways staff can connect with students. And, and I think, in a typical school, our junior, senior high school, a lot of those connections are made between classrooms, when students are passing in the hallway, or before class, or after class. Those opportunities that are being missed, for students and adults to make those connections, that we'll have to be a little bit more deliberate in, in building those connections into their meets, offering opportunities for socialization, and, and making those connections. When it comes to the connections with peers, students were a little bit more concerned about their lack of connections with their peers. Grades three through six was about 35% of the students that felt like they did not have the connections with peers that they should be having. And teachers and parents were much more concerned about their child's, or their student's connections with peers, than their connections with adults. So we want to make sure that we really focus on opportunities for students to connect with one other, one another. Again, opportunities for socialization, as well as looking at group projects, and opportunities for students to connect in small groups, even if they're working remotely, that they're connecting with their classmates and their peers on a, on a more personal level. As far as the, the learning environment, this was, this was good information for us. The students and the teachers were much more aligned in how they felt about the learning model. And we have to keep in mind that all parents were answering the survey, so even parents of children from preschool to grade two. But when it came to students filling out the survey, it was only students in grades three through 12. So when we have about 40% of the parents saying that it's been difficult for their child to learn in this learning environment, whereas over 80% of the students and teachers are saying that they have slight or no difficulty accessing their learning. So, you know, we'll have to look more closely to see if it's our younger students that are having more struggles with accessing the technology and managing their Google Classroom and, and the apps, as opposed to our three through 12. So it was very encouraging to see students, grades three through 12, having slight or no difficulty accessing the, the technology and managing their online learning, which was nice. It was, it was very interesting to hear the likes and the dislikes across the board. Everybody likes in-person, you know, they like the opportunities to connect with each other. Another piece that we have to look more closely, the, the grade six through 12 students seem to be misinterpreting maybe Wednesdays as a makeup workday, or as a half-day. So we definitely have to look at that more closely, to make sure, especially when we talked with staff, and they felt very favorable to the Wednesday, because they're teaching everybody in one learning mode, as opposed to simultaneous teaching. So we really need to maximize that opportunity for learning of new concepts, and, and stretching the learning a little bit further. Because our, our grade six through 12 students were very honest about the fact that they want new content, they want less review, and less busy work, is what they refer to it as. So we really want to look at, especially those Wednesdays, if that's the easiest day to have that live teaching, how we're using those days. Students don't like the masks, but students did report that they're happy to see the compliance with everybody wearing the masks, and it's making them feel more safe about that. Both parents and students, you know, one of their biggest likes is, is seeing and being with their teachers, and seeing and being with their, their classmates, which we knew. So we want to look at our online opportunities for them to connect more with their teachers, and connect more with their classmates. Like I said, these are, these are some of the highlights, but certainly, as we look at the learning environment overall- environment overall, we want to look at how we're using the online time. What came up in the survey a number of times is especially our fully remote students and them not feeling the comparison to the learning that our hybrid students are getting. So we want to look at that model a little bit more closely to see the time that teachers are spending online in giving the fully remote students access to the learning versus the times when they're not online with our fully remote students or even with our hybrid students when they're home and what they may not be able to access if they're not learning synchronously. Interestingly enough, the state is now taking measure on how much time we are spending on student learning. At the beginning of the year, they asked every district to submit their plans. We submitted information based on our MOA with the association, and we put that information exactly the way it's written in the MOA, even if we have teachers going beyond that. So for the lower levels, we said two meaningful meets every day, and our surveys did indicate that. There was not one grade level of parents or teachers or students that reported that they were getting less than two meets a day. And then the amount of time, the average amount of time on a meet was anywhere between eleven and thirty-three minutes. So in order to get some meaningful time, we've said to the teachers that it should look more like thirty minutes. However, that could possibly only be an hour at the elementary level. The state is coming out with new standards, which will force us to go back in with the association and revamp our MOA so that we have more learning hours over a ten-day period. The state is moving to an average of thirty-five hours in a ten-day period. And right now, if elementary students had two meets a day, thirty minutes each, we'd be about eleven hours short over a two-week period. So we definitely, because they average it out as a district, we're only six minutes short because at the junior, senior level, they're getting thirty-nine hours over ten days. So they average that out. So we came out to thirty-four as opposed to the thirty-five that they're looking for. But definitely an opportunity for us to have to go back in with the association and talk about how we increased that and when's the most meaningful time to do that, whether we're looking at the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday time, or we're looking at the Wednesday time to increase that. The other thing that the state is going to require of hybrid learning is that every single day, there's at least one live meet. And it's nice to say that, you know, as a district, we were already doing that. So that's one thing we don't have to worry about. The other thing that we'll need to include in there, though, is the remote learning. So even because we're not a remote learning model, but if we ever move to remote for even two days, we have to be following what the state is going to be putting out as to the hours. And they're looking for forty hours of synchronous live instruction over a ten-day period. So that will have to be built into the MOA as well so that if we do move to a full remote model, then we'll have to be adhering to that. The state is looking for this to go into effect as of January nineteenth. So they are giving us some time so that districts can meet with their associations and make sure that if any language needs to be worked out, it can be worked out by January nineteenth. So it was, you know, the timing, obviously, for us to have the survey information to factor that in as well as we look at adjusting the language so that we have our student learning time matching what the state is going to be requiring of all districts. So that was kind of the survey in a nutshell. Like I said, you know, certainly it's going to give us opportunities to improve what deficiencies we're seeing now, obviously highlighting the things that are working very well. It was nice to see that the staff commented on so many technology tools that they've learned and that they're incorporating and that they're liking about the learning model that they're in right now. So I'll be back.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
You were speaking about, there may have been some miscommunication or misunderstanding about Wednesdays, but I see Wednesday keep coming up as what is working well. Can you, is that more detail? Is it the model that we have? Is it that we're all remote on Wednesday? Is there any more detail on those answers?
Yeah. So you'll see in the survey, instead of listing out every single comment, we did a Wordle so you can see which words kept coming up. And the Wednesday came up from a staff perspective because they felt that that was one day that they had everybody in one learning model. So they felt like from a management standpoint, it was much easier to build community, and it was much easier for them to manage their class and the learning because everybody was learning the same way on that day. The students at the junior, senior level, they liked the Wednesdays because they look at the Wednesdays as a makeup day, catch-up day, and a half day. So Wednesday was highlighted by different groups for different reasons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just because we're on the topic of Wednesday, and I think you touched on it, obviously, when we talked about Wednesdays, it was not intended to just be a check-in day, makeup work day. It was intended to be a little more robust than that. Is that correct? Is that where there's a little bit of a discrepancy?
Yeah. So we'll have to sort through that because, you know, it seems as though from the teacher perspective, that Wednesday is a day for them to get some solid teaching in because they have everybody on one platform. At the junior, senior level, because they're running through their full schedule, they are doing abbreviated classrooms. So they may need to relook at that to see, is that the best way to run the schedule on those Wednesdays? If it is a better time to capture some significant learning of new material, knowing you have everybody remote, maybe the longer blocks would be a better use of the time on Wednesdays. But we'll have to kind of sort through that to see, you know, what is the best use of those Wednesdays from a teaching and learning perspective.
I think this was a great survey. I think the information that was sought by all groups of people, I think it's really helpful, obviously from an administrative standpoint, but also, you know, when you hear general feedback, you know, from another parent or in the community, it's really helpful to know. And I don't know how many other districts have done or are thinking of doing something like this, but I see a lot of good in this, and I see obviously ways for improvement, which you would expect, you know, to find things to improve on or revamp. But it's really good to see some numbers on different types of categories and such. So thank you.
You're welcome. And as we've talked about, you know, we needed to get beyond the, just bring them back, you know, because if we can't just bring them back, then we need to, again, like I said, it's never going to be as good as traditional teaching and learning in a school building. But if there are things that we can do here and there to make it more manageable for our teachers and make it more accessible for our students and less stressful for our parents at home, then certainly we want to make those adjustments.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Gina? I know Kira is going to be up next. So before we turn it over to Kira, anything else for Gina?
Tim, just one thing. John Shea, I pushed Gina up.
You're muted.
And Gina was right that John had, he's got two sheets he wants to go over, and I think he's just going to review them quickly. It's the operating budget that he usually does in his revolving accounts before Kira goes.
Okay. Basically, things really haven't changed that much from the last time I presented. The non-salary budget at December eleventh has a available balance of six hundred and forty-three thousand for the remainder of the year. Last year at this time, the available balance was two hundred and six thousand. So as you can see, we have not been spending as much as we had last year. I think there's a lot of variables around that. Special education tuitions, we've seen an increase. We've seen an increase in transportation for special ed. Obviously, not as many students are in schools, so there are less supplies being used, but I will continue to monitor that. But as of December eleventh, financially speaking, for fiscal year twenty-one, we're looking pretty good in the non-salary side. On the salary side, I have projected out salaries through the end of the year, and I am estimating that we will be on budget. So that's good news for the budget. Revolving fund balances, pretty consistent to what I presented last month. They're all listed. Circuit breakers at four hundred and forty-five thousand. School choices at up to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. That's a pretty significant increase right now compared to last year. Preschool currently has a negative balance. I will be making some reclasses to salaries. We can't have a negative balance at year-end, so I'll be correcting that. But overall, I think you'll see, if you remember from last month, that things really haven't changed that month. We've been holding steady on the budget, and I feel as though this year, we're doing well and we will definitely meet the budget for fiscal year twenty-one. If you have any questions?
I don't. Anyone else? Nice work as usual, John. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Kira, you there?
Yeah.
All right. How are you? I hope everything's going well. What's going on from a student perspective? I think we lost her. Am I frozen or is she frozen?
I think she's frozen.
No, okay.
I think she is.
I think she's frozen.
I think she's frozen.
I'll give her one second to see if she comes back on.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Excellent. How are things from a student perspective?
Things are going pretty okay. I have some quick updates on a lot of student activities. So first things first, I don't know if any of you have driven by the town common recently, but you may have noticed that some of the trees have been decorated by some of the school clubs, and so that's been going on for the past week. The band has also, the band and chorus and multiple music groups have also recorded parts of their winter concert, rather than doing an in-person concert this year like years past, which is impossible because of COVID. They have elected to record parts of it, which will be put together by EB Cam, so thank you to them. And finally, the Student Senate High fundraiser was incredibly successful, and distribution will be on December twenty-first. And then just one more.
Is the fundraiser still open or is it closed?
No, that's closed. Sorry.
Okay.
And then just one quick note. As for seniors, seniors don't have a great grasp on the expectations, but they are interested to see how tomorrow will turn out. So that's it from me.
I think I would pass along, you know, to the seniors, like I said earlier, I think anyone who's involved in scheduling at a high school level is an incredibly complex task, and I would be stunned if, it's not like flipping a light switch where we go from A to B. It's a process. And I'll be very interested to see how this evolves over the next few weeks, but I mean, I understand their concern, and I'm sure that wherever it's at now, Mr. Sylvia is working on having it be better. So I'll be interested to hear from you when we meet in January, what your perspective is on how things progress from now to then.
Kira, can I just ask a general question that I probably should have asked long before now, but I always just wonder? When you bring this feedback from the seniors to us here on the school committee, how do you survey the seniors to kind of get a pulse? Do you do like a Google Doc? Is it more informal? Do you have, you know, because there's so many different, you know, groups of students with, you know, interests and stuff. So how do you gather this particular pulse from the students in general, but in this case, the seniors?
Yeah, definitely. So the understanding that students, that seniors don't have a great grasp on expectations, I got that information from when I was in person last Thursday and Friday when we were discussing what everyone thought of Wednesday. These were discussions that were held in multiple classes, and so I was able to hear what a lot of students thought of it. That covered, I think, a broad range of students in athletics, in music, in art, and pretty generally, everyone all thought the same. Okay, thank you. I just always wonder, because you're really good about getting information and giving it, so I'd just like to know how you gather it. And then generally, for the overall student body, how do you get that type of feedback? Yeah, so when I'm looking for, like, the general student body, one thing that I will go to is the Student Advisory Committee, which is made up of juniors and seniors, which I can get a pretty good idea of what's going on. I also reach out to my own siblings who are in other grades, and if I really want more information, I will post a poll or a question on my Instagram story where in weeks past, I have received a high number of responses to from a wide range of grades.
Thank you, Kira.
And Kira, I'll be honest, you know, I've been involved with other district school committee meetings, and I very frankly like that you don't mind coming and talking about problems because I've often seen the student rep come and report on, you know, how the hockey team did and, you know, the bake sale next weekend, and those are all valuable parts of student life, but it's, you know, sometimes things don't go as well as planned either, and I like that you don't mind bringing that up.
Yeah, of course. I'm open to answer any questions, and I just want to help provide the best view on what's going on in the school.
Thank you. We all appreciate it. Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. So we are, I'm sorry, public comment. So due to the unorthodox setup of our meeting this week, I know that the public does have the ability to speak if there's anyone gathered at the library right now. Superintendent Lugo, is there any member of the public there?
No.
Okay.
No.
So we will stay with the public comment period and move on to action items. So first, action is required on the school committee minutes. I would take a motion to approve the school committee minutes from November seventeenth, twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. I'm sorry. Moved by who?
Ellen.
Moved by, second by Teresa. We'll do a roll call. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Waltz?
Abstain.
Ah, yes. I would take a motion to approve payroll accounts payable warrants, twenty-one SV dated eleven eighteen twenty-twenty, and twenty-three SV dated twelve to twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Amanda. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Waltz?
Aye.
Thank you. Take a motion to approve payroll warrants, twenty-two PS dated eleven twenty-four twenty-twenty, and twenty-four PS dated twelve nine twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Moved by, second by Teresa. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Waltz?
Aye.
Thank you. I would take a motion to approve Superintendent Lugo's twenty to twenty, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one performance goals, sorry.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Trista. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Faltz?
Aye.
All right. Having no other business listed on the agenda, I would take a motion at this time to close the meeting.
Tim?
So moved. Gina, do you have something?
Yeah, just the substitute pay rate from seventy-five to ninety.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right. I will approve raising the substitute pay rate from seventy-five dollars per day to ninety dollars per day.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Ellen. McLaughlin, aye.
I would like to just say one thing, under discussion is that I know that there are other districts that have also gone to ninety dollars, and I think this is a great idea.
Great, thank you. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Faltz?
Aye.
All right.
Tim, before we close the meeting, before we close the meeting, I would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season, Happy New Year, and stay safe.
Stay safe, both long-term health-wise and with the storm on tomorrow night, everyone. Good luck. All right, I take a motion to close the meeting at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ellen. McLaughlin, aye. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Olligan?
Aye.
Faltz?
Aye.
All right, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Be well, everybody.
Good night, happy holidays.